Are we waiting for somebody Rebecca? Can you hear me? Yes, muted.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I think we have a quorum and we are ready to proceed.
Okay. All right, on June 16th Planning Board Meeting will come to order at 7:04. Do I have a motion?
No motion.
Second. Just name your name, please, so we don't have to, you know. Brad?
Aye, Brad.
Jim?
Aye, Jim.
Wally? You're muted, Wally. Raise your hand for now. Okay, and Bob, oh, so. So the town planner will update on the remote.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This open meeting of the Grove and Planning Board is being conducted remotely consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12, 2020, due to the current state of emergency and the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of the COVID-19 virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of the COVID-19 virus, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings, and as such, the governor's order suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. For this meeting, the Grove and Planning Board is convening by video conference via Zoom, as posted on the town's website, identifying how the public may join. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and that some attendees are participating by video conference. All supporting materials are available on the town's website.
All right, thank you. All right, A&R, first thing up is A&R 37 Wood Street, Jay Ogden, Assessors Bank, lot 4, created a new lot. Lot 4P.
Mr. Chair, this is Adam Costa with me, Callum Renacosta. Jay Ogden is on the meeting as well. Why don't you introduce yourself, Jay?
Yes.
So I don't know, Mr. Chair, if I have the ability to share my screen so I can bring the plan up so we're all looking at it, or whether you've just got it in front of each of you?
No, we don't. If you can try to bring it up, it'd be great.
You are able to share your screen, Adam, if you would like to.
Yeah. Rebecca, when I attempt to do so, it tells me that the host has disabled participant screen sharing. Do you have the ability to modify that so I can get through?
I am working on that right now, so I don't know if you want to start while I do that.
So I certainly can. So again, Mr. Chair, members of the board, I'm Adam Costa. I'm gonna have for a moment for you, in a moment, a version of the plan that we've submitted. You can all see it on your screens, but I know that Jay's been before you at a couple of your recent meetings with different iterations of a plan for this property that he owns off of Wood Street. And he has not been present for those meetings, but he's given me a bit of a rundown as to some of the concerns that board members had specifically related to use of a common driveway, amongst other things. So what we've submitted for you tonight, and what we hope to discuss with you and to get your endorsement on, is really a scaled-down version of what we had submitted originally. It's creating a single new lot, it's identified as Lot 4P on the town.
Yeah, we got it up on it now.
Okay, so I don't have the ability to move my cursor because Rebecca's sharing her screen, but I think it's obvious for you that you've got this Lot 4P. It's labeled in the center of the screen. It's a lot of approximately 3.18 acres, identified as potential number 27 Wood Street. And then you've got just the remaining land left over from the much larger lot. Remaining land consists of about 15 acres or so. So the only new lot that we'd be creating as a potential building lot would be what's been marked as Lot 4P. And although I saw it and I told Jay, I thought it was a bit unusual for an A&R plan, I understand that it's the board's practice to show locations of things like proposed driveways, proposed house locations, potential septic locations, and even the 120-foot diameter circle that the zoning bylaw requires. So all of that is also shown. Bill Holt has added it within Lot 4P. So it's a relatively straightforward A&R plan. Where Jay had filled in some questions from board members. He asked me, especially since you were doing this by Zoom, and it was easy for me to just jump onto the meeting. He asked me to join and to present it to answer any questions that board members might have. So with that, I'll turn it back over to you, Mr. Chairman. And again, happy to answer any questions that board members or Rebecca might have about the plan that we've submitted.
Okay, does any of the board members have any questions on this?
He's well within, you know, the ability to ask for an A&R, Adam. I got a question on the culvert, the size of the culvert that's there, and is there any potential use of the other lots further down as a subdivision?
That's a fair question. Jay, you know more particulars about the site and the drainage proposal. Do you want to speak to the culvert question?
With Rebecca sharing her screen, I can't seem to exit this. I do have an email from Bill Holt that the details. I believe one of the culverts is an 18-inch culvert and the other is a 12-inch. They both, looking at the plan, they flow from the left to the right and then off the right-hand side of the property. The flow is intermittent, so it's an intermittent stream bed. Last time I was out there, it was trickling. It does usually dry up by July. And in the springtime, those two culverts do discharge some flow that causes some erosion in the existing road bank, and that was one of the things we're hoping to address with the construction of the driveway.
The other question that I have, the size, the length of the culvert, Jay. It's not just a 200 footer, is it?
I'm sorry, the length of the culvert?
Yeah.
Under the proposed driveway?
Correct.
I believe it was approximately 25 feet, 24 feet?
Do you plan on extending it?
No, no, the culvert was just to handle any of the runoff that would come from the north, northerly edge of the property from 29 Wood Street, directed into the existing channel and continue on into the intermittent stream bed.
And one other question for the lot would be, is there going to be future development with other lots? Or is this going to be the one and only lot?
Well, at your last meeting, I believe we were directed to suggested that we bring in some proposed definitive plans for another access point off of Wood Street further up. We're sort of evaluating that, whether or not it's feasible to pursue. But this is this is the, I guess, the simplest lot to pursue without, as you guys pointed out, constructing a new roadway.
Your ultimate goal is if you could, you would build more, correct?
I've always tried to be pretty straightforward with the Planning Board and Conservation that I was hoping to limit any development on this. I guess it's about 25 acres to possibly three homes. And then my intention was to donate the remainder of the property to Conservation.
Okay, so you're gonna donate the property. I'm just, I mean, I think you, that's nice, but the town of Grove, what are they gonna do with the property? And number two, by donating the property, aren't you also saving on taxes?
I guess so. It saves on taxes in the sense that if I donate the land, I will no longer be paying the taxes.
We had looked into, through you, Mr. Chairman, we had looked into, as you know, an earlier proposal included a common driveway to provide access to three separate homes. And we had discussions, I had discussions with Rebecca and also with Sam Jocelyn about the feasibility of accomplishing that. You have a couple of what I perceive to be conflicting provisions in your bylaw. On the one hand, there is no reference to common driveways, and I understand that that has been interpreted to prohibit them, and I can respect that interpretation. At the same time, you've got a different provision also within the bylaw that suggests that access can be provided other than over your frontage, so up through some other area that's not your frontage, if you get permission from the Planning Board through some sort of a plan approval process, or I think the language says a process that is the equivalent of or similar to a definitive plan approval process. So that's a, I don't know what a process similar to definitive plan approval is. I don't know how you mesh that with the lack of any reference in the bylaw to a common driveway. So I bounced that, you know, off of Rebecca. I batted it back and forth with Sam a little bit. I think that Sam reached out to Town Council to get some advice as well. And ultimately, the answer that we got, for better or for worse, is unless we want to challenge that determination, the determination is that common driveways aren't permitted unless there's some sort of a future change to the bylaw. So it's never been Jay's objective, at least through my conversations with Jay and what he's represented to me in terms of his long-term plans for this lot, it's never been his objective to, you know, try to go to war with the town on this site. So we didn't want to submit a request and we didn't want to challenge that request and litigate the common driveway question. We held back the proposal and we've got one single family house lot. And we're looking at some options for the other, the remaining land and potentially trying to salvage the ability to get two more houses. But, you know, starting to build a roadway with a sizable wetland, it's gonna be costly. And so for two single-family homes, it's sort of hard to justify that. So we're looking at that possibility, but I think presently stands that we've got to put a board tonight with the single lot.
Okay, so I think we had some further discussion with the common driveways. And it was my understanding that if we're gonna put it on, I think it has to go to town to vote. Am I right, Rebecca? Do you remember that? I don't know, can anyone hear me?
Yes, we are looking to clean that up for the town because there is some inconsistency. So we are looking to proceed with a potential bylaw that would allow for common driveways per special permit if the board would recommend that for town meeting and whether or not the town meeting would in fact support that. So it is something that we've been considering putting forward, but at a later point in time.
I think we're, Adam, I think we're a year away from that.
Yeah, that's, I mean, it's a fair point, and so, you know, we'll keep our eye on that. And if Jay wants to sit on this remainder land for, you know, the year or so and see if that's a possibility, it sounds like even then, it will be with a special permit process. So certainly, there'd be some discretionary relief that the board could or could not. But that would be a possibility. But as things stand today, it would appear driveway is not an option, so.
And he's just, he's just trying to go for the A&R. I know the last planning show, he was trying to sneak a driveway up above 33 Wood Street to get away from the wetlands, to get into the back lots. And so that's pretty much out for him now.
So I think that's a possibility that we've discussed and that we're exploring. I mean, you know, the challenge with any lot in a configuration of this sort, with the wetlands being where they are, is that you can gain access to the lot, but can't access to, you know, a portion of the lot that's large enough to construct a house on without crossing the wetlands. And this lot, Lot 4P, that we've got proposed, the wetlands crossing is manageable in terms of the practicalities of constructing it and also in terms of the cost associated with it. For, you know, to the, what is it, to the east here on the remainder land. And, you know, you've got plenty of frontage there to get a couple more lots. But you've got a pretty wide swath of wetlands running through there, and that's a pretty expensive crossing and possibly one that you wouldn't get approval for through Conservation Commission. So we are looking at alternatives to access, but it's challenging because of the placement of the wetland. You get plenty of land area.
Guys, we eliminated the common driveway bylaw on purpose, and I will not support a common driveway bylaw because we've had problems with it and we brought this up in a previous meeting. I'm welcome to start a spirited discussion with the board and the town, but as far as I'm concerned, nothing shall be placed forward before town meeting or on a warrant article until we review that entire process. However, this A&R, I just got a couple of questions on it. One, contiguous buildable area circle. Okay, that's on the lot. It meets the requirement, but why is it not over where the house is?
So through you, Mr. Chairman, my understanding, and Jay can correct me if I'm mistaken, because again, I don't have the benefit of having participated in your prior discussions, but my understanding was that there was a preference expressed by the board. And again, it's unusual conversation to have in the A&R context, but there was one concerning the driveway and shortening the length of the proposed driveway to the location of the house. And so we placed the house toward the rear of the lot, up sort of on that knoll. You can see the divot.
Maybe you misunderstood. And that's not what we asked. What we asked Jay to do was to make up his mind what he wanted to do and submit conceptual plans for review so we could review them and give them some feedback with engineering. So sorry if that was a misunderstanding. But the conceptual process for $500 to get the engineer in to review it was the cheapest and fastest way. So, but as far as the regulation goes on an A&R, the CBA circle, which is at 120, is exactly what that is. It's a contiguous buildable area circle, so anyone can put a house, a pool, a shed, a garage, or anything you want in that CBA area because it meets zoning requirements. So it has nothing to do with the driveway length or anything like that. So that's where I'm raising an eyebrow. Why is that circle way back there and the house lot is way up front? And if you're trying to sneak in a couple of different lots later, which we've seen in the town before, I don't think that's gonna fly. So which is it? Because we'll just endorse the plan, not building lots on any other piece of property. So what is it that you want? I mean, if you want to put in three houses and you meet the reg, you do. But you have a completely different and misunderstanding on the interpretation of the reg to come in a different way. The A&R handbook is very clear. Thou shall access from thy frontage. So you gotta come in through the frontage, and that's what we were trying to explain to Jay. If you can do a small subdivision, that makes sense. But he didn't want to do three culvert crossings and wanted to go in a common driveway. And you can't do that. And so you either gotta do a three-lot subdivision and have one culvert crossing, which you can probably do, that is a big chunk of land up there. But make up your mind, and if you don't know which is gonna fly, submit the conceptual plan, have the engineers review it, and then take the, because they're very inexpensive, and then take it from there. So on the CBA circle, why is it way back there? And where's the house go? And is this, that's it, one A&R plan, that's it, no further development, no further access, no sneaking off driveways or anything like that. So which one is it?
So Mr. Chairman, through you, I'm not sure that I follow Wally's reasoning if I could. I understand certainly the A&R handbook. I teach the A&R handbook, so I'm quite familiar with it. I understand the conceptual process. I've never known a conceptual process to be something that is associated with an A&R, given the fact the extent of the board's jurisdiction with respect to an A&R is determining the existence of adequate frontage. And that adequate frontage is along one of the types of ways that are specified in the statute. So we're showing the 120-foot diameter circle in a lot on the site, which is what your zoning requires. A location for the house, if the desire is to have the location of that house within the 120-foot diameter circle, we're certainly happy to relocate the house further to the rear of the lot. Again, I'm not sure why any of this relates to the A&R endorsement in the sense that, you know, these are proposed locations of house, proposed locations of septic systems, potential locations of septic system. Zoning compliance is certainly something that will be reviewed. It gets reviewed at the building permit stage. It's not something that gets reviewed at the A&R stage, so.
No, that's not correct because the A&R, no, it's not correct. No, it's not. It has to meet the A&R. If you're creating an A&R, it has to meet the zoning requirement at the time on the plan or it's not endorsed as a building lot.
That's incorrect, Wally. That's incorrect.
No, it's not. And I'm sorry, but I've been doing this probably as long as you have. So which is it? And I don't care if you have 10 circles on the plan, but Bill Holt knows how to design a plan with a CBA circle. So my question is, why is it there? And do you have other areas that meet the CBA requirement that you can put on the house? And that's fine if you do, okay? But from the looks of that plan, it looks like the house is there and there's another CBA circle way in the back to support another house, and that's what I'm questioning.
Now, this is all a single lot. I'm not sure how we would propose two houses on the same lot. That would be in violation of the bylaw.
Definitely, I agree with you. It definitely looks like all single hot, one.
Yeah, because some of the plants, you know, they're hard to see on a little screen, but that's my question. So is Bill online too? Is he here?
No, he isn't.
Okay, so all you have to do is to meet the requirement. And I'll tell you why we did this. Because the intent of the bylaw change to put in the contiguous buildable area circle was, people had very large lots like this, and it was four acres, but most of it was underwater. Okay, and so they would say, hey, you got four acres, but you didn't have enough space to be continuously buildable. It was separated by wetlands or something else. And so we put this into effect over 20 years ago so that the future homeowners, which has happened a bunch, will take this plan when you're done with it. And if you don't build a shed for him or a garage for him, but he wants to put in a swimming pool or something else, he knows that anything within that 120-foot diameter circle, he can put anything he wants because it meets the zoning requirement. And some pieces of land are pretty flat, so you could put a bunch of them. But typically, it goes around the proposed area of the house. Okay, so you know that you can put everything there. Now, if you, like I said, if you have a CBA calculation that's 90% of a lot, then that notation, I didn't see it on the plan, should be there. There's a calculation that goes on the plan. Is that up in the corner somewhere that I missed?
The contiguous buildable area calculation is just under 90,000 square feet in the lot area. Yes.
Okay, good.
So the lot area, the lot area, sir, is 138,000 square feet. And the regulations certainly used to require a house be located within the circle. But since then, your town meeting changed that probably a good 10 years ago to say that the house no longer needed to fit within the circle?
No, that's not what the area was for. It doesn't have to, it has to meet the setbacks on the zoning. But what we did was created the circle for two reasons. One, for the narrowing of the lot to show that it didn't narrow and anything in the circle meets the setbacks. And typically, and Bill's done this for 20 years as well, the circle goes around the house. But just to answer my question, can you get three circles on there?
Yes.
All right, so that's a simple fix. Okay, but I'm also giving you a history that others may not know as to why we put that in there and what happens when people move in. And Stonebridge is a classic for that one, where people moved in and didn't know they couldn't put swimming pools or sheds or garages up, and they did it anyway, and they were outside the area. So that's, it protects the future homeowners. So if it's one A&R plan and everything's on the plan and there's no future development on a build-out on this plan and it meets the requirement, then it flies. But if you're trying to add off it later with that culvert and other driveways, it's not going to fly.
Wally, I thought, correct me if I'm wrong, I thought that circle, that whole circle stuff changed. Now, I remember on my lot.
It did.
And with all due respect.
It did about 10 years ago. I remember.
I went through it with my lot over there in the industrial zone.
Which one, on the industrial zone? Yeah, but was that an A&R plan, Brad?
Yeah.
All right, well, we'll see where that goes, but I know what the intent was.
I thought it was a percentage of the circle, and it didn't have to apply to the dwelling in the circle. And I think that was.
Typically, it doesn't, but typically, it does. If you've got a lot that's greater than, like it sounds like they do on this lot, okay, then it really doesn't matter. You have to show that there is one on there, which they did. But my question was, why was it so far back? Which just, you know, that was for me to figure out that, why is it so far back there in a large lot?
And in defense, in defense of everybody here, it's hard without seeing a normal-sized plan in front of everybody.
Oh, yeah, my screen's four by six, so it's very difficult. So that's all right. You answered my question. And if that's it for the A&R and there's no future potential build-out, okay, and it meets the A&R regulation, then it flies. But the other lots in there, you gotta stamp them not proposed building lots or not a building lot.
Right. You can't deny them other building lots because they're not, he hasn't even subdivided them yet, Wally. So you cannot deny him no more building lots.
No, I said on the plan, you have to note the other parcels of land, since it's not coming in on an A&R, not a building lot. And then it comes off when he does. But that's the standard stamp on the other vacant pieces. And I like the donation piece to the town. I'm sure Conservation would like it. That was a to-do about 15 years ago when this came through with that giant CSD. So I'm sure that they'd be looking back into that, but that's not our billing work.
So. Mr. Chairman, through you, with respect to the remaining land on the plan, we've not marked it not a building lot. I appreciate that stamp. And often, when property is divided into multiple buildable lots through an A&R endorsement process, there is remaining land that is, say, landlocked or does not have the requisite frontage that would be required to constitute a building lot. That lot would be marked not a buildable lot without further zoning relief, and that is the endorsement on a plan. That's not what we have there. We have the creation of Lot 4P. The remaining land has more than enough frontage to be a buildable lot.
I agree, and you're bringing it in off the frontage, right?
We would have to be. We're not proposing.
Right, they would have to, but they're not forcing it right now, so.
But could there possibly be a notation placed on the plan that that particular lot, map 8 lot 4, is subject to future development plans? So that a notation is added to the plan that there is a discussion for future development on that parcel? So where it's not technically being labeled not buildable, there is a notation with the intent for future development to alleviate any confusion moving forward?
Well, under Massachusetts general law, if you've got potential build-out, you have to show it or at least show a proposed plan, and that's where the conceptual process came in that we were suggesting. It actually helps you guys.
Which Massachusetts general law is that?
Chapter 141. Take a look at it on future build-out, okay? But it's also a suggestion of the board. And we asked Jay to do that, okay, come in with the conceptual plans. And we do get conceptuals on an A&R process, and that's why we made that available. It's very inexpensive, goes through engineer review, highlights some issues, and it's done, okay? So it's a very quick process. But if you are doing a potential build-out, okay, you have to submit the proposed build-out plan. So that's where I'm getting real confused with an A&R, and then it grows and multiplies. So if this is a modified A&R and it's got one house, one driveway, one access, and access from the frontage, it meets the A&R requirement. But it's got, you know, the other stuff, the topo, which it looks like it does. And the driveway is required because, and you know why that's on there? It's because potential storm drains off the subdivision. We've got a few where the driveways weren't located and the catch basin ended up right in the driveway access. So that's why that was referenced on there. And also, we just have it on Sunset. Somebody put the driveway on the opposite side, and we got a fire hydrant that was located in the guy's driveway. So that's why these. So that's why these regulations are written. They make total sense when you bring in what has happened in the past and what the intent of the reg was. Not to harass anybody, but we've seen it and we try to prevent it in the future. So we got an A and R, just so I'm clear. One lot, access, it's fairly large, one culver crossing, no further development on this particular parcel. And there is another, as Rebecca said, parcels of land that may be for future development. And that could be noted on the plan. But if you're going to do a build out, a max build out on a parcel, you've got to bring that in. So, but do you know what you're doing?
We have no current development plan for the remaining land, which is why nothing is shown on the plan that's before you. Not in the fact that it's an A and R plan and it wouldn't be shown on an A and R plan.
Yeah, that's why we brought in the conceptual process. And I'm sorry, that got confused as something different. It's a really good tool for everyone to use. And I think that maybe we should suggest that a little bit more. So my questions are answered on this, if it's a single A and R. But I really don't want to see this thing come back on this particular lot and this thing grows because then I'll feel that the board has been misled.
You're speaking about Lot 4P.
Just that, that's correct. Just that one lot.
Understood.
Good.
I rest.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Back to you.
Um. I would make a motion to approve this A and R lot. As it stands.
So a motion is.
For the remaining parcel. Eventually could be developed down the road.
So then, Adam, if that's all right with you, then we'll motion to proceed as the A and R 4P, I believe, and make a notation for further development on the other two lots. Is that what we're thinking, Rebecca?
If that's what the board wants to do in terms of approval, I don't think, like Adam was stating, that the board has the ability to deny the A and R based upon the fact that it meets the statutory requirements and it is in fact creating a lot. Whether or not it's buildable and any other future development on that lot is really up to the building commissioner. So I don't necessarily think a design notation stating that future development would be considered as part of map eight lot four would deter this from being approved if that's the position that the board would like to take.
Yeah, no, exactly. It's.
I think the only note what you want is that not necessarily about future development, but that the open parcels are not considered a building lot at this time. And that's the only, and that's pretty standard. But that would be my only input. I don't, the future development stuff that comes under a different reg, but not to hold up the A and R. But I think just the, we used to do it, actually. We used to have a stamp in the planning board office that would, you know, that would indicate similar what Rebecca said, that the other parcels on there are not considered building lots unless they go through the A and R process or subdivision control process.
And Mr. Chairman, through you, I have no objection to, I think, what the first couple of board members were referencing, what Rebecca has suggested, which is if the board wishes to condition its approval or make a notation that the remainder of Lot four, the remaining land shown on the plan, will be subject to future development. That's fine. You have an objection to the suggestion that the more traditional, not a building lot without further zoning relief on the remaining land, because the remaining land is a building, has adequate frontage along one of the types that is referenced in the statute. Does that mean we get to avoid the development process, the application for a building permit if we seek to divide it into multiple additional building lots? Does that mean we get to avoid further A and R? Absolutely not. But what we have left over is not a small parcel of landlocked property, as would typically be the case with a more traditional marking, not a building lot without further zoning relief, because you'd need the relief. You'd need a variance from the frontage requirement or from the area requirement. We don't need a variance to keep the remaining property a buildable lot. We just need to go through a process.
So is that your intent?
I can tell you at present, we don't know what our intent was. Our intent two months ago, three months ago, was to come three building lots, build three houses, and whatever land was left over would be donated to the town. When it became apparent to us through the discussions we had, that Jay had with the board and the discussion I had with Rebecca and with Sam, it became apparent that common driveway wasn't an option. Well, the concept of three houses, utilize subdivision roadway and a substantial wetland crossing or a series of wetland crossings became a lot more costly. And so right now, we're not quite sure what our development plan would be for the remaining land.
So why didn't you do just a small, a small little inlay roadway with one crossing with a cul-de-sac and branch off from there because it wouldn't, and the frontage would be derived off the cul-de-sac because it wouldn't have to be that long?
Yeah, that is something that we briefly discussed. I'll let Jay speak to why that was, other than the fact that it would incur additional cost of constructing the roadway. But Jay can speak to why a subdivision was not the preferred option.
Well, it'd be 150 feet, really, depending on how linked the cul-de-sac was on the radius. But if you had frontage on one side, 150 feet, the cul-de-sac derives, the second lot, 150, after the wetlands crossing, and then the other side picked it up. I think that's doable, and that's where the conceptual plan came in. But that would be a much better plan for everybody. And then you would, you could have three little driveways off the cul-de-sac and you're done. And then you meet all the regulations. You would just have to, but you wouldn't have to build a 900 foot roadway. It would be very short. So Jay, why wasn't that in there? Because that would make a lot of sense.
In either approach, either access through the property, you're going in approximately 450 feet before you can really pick up any street frontage.
Well, no.
450,000 feet makes it a little cost prohibitive. On top of the fact, it was never my intention to build a cluster of six houses back there. But when we analyze further development approaches to it, that's what we end up having to do to offset the expense of constructing that much roadway. And I'm looking for an avenue out of this so that I don't have to build 750 feet of road and have to create five or six house lots to pay for the road just to provide a build out plan.
Well, that makes sense. But the 450 is all you need for men. And I don't know what it looks like on that plan where that would come in and derive it. But that is exactly the frontage you need, is 450 feet. And of course.
What I'm saying is, I have to build 450 feet of road just to get past the existing lots on Wood Street. So I have to build 450 feet of roadway, then I can start building roadway that I can use for frontage.
Well, wait a minute. Depending on where you put that, not necessarily, but that's where the conceptual comes in to play. Because if you did the crossing and let's say, okay, 450 doesn't work because it's right there at the edge of the wetland. But, and I don't know what this looked like. That's why we suggested the conceptual for 500 bucks. But if you went in 650 feet or whatever the heck it is, and then you could legally have three driveway access and have the frontage off the roadway, and then you would be able to get your lots in. And you wouldn't have to build, you know, way back over. So that's what we were trying to figure out. Because nobody wants six houses up there because you have to pay for the road that goes in. But now you may have backed yourself into a corner unless you don't use the A and R because you may need that area to come in and then do maybe a little mini cul-de-sac. And maybe there's another way out of that with a hammerhead or something like that. I don't know. Plans for you. But it seemed to the board, which is why we suggested the conceptual process, was that there were multiple ways to skin this cat and get you what you needed. But we couldn't tell with a small screen on a dinky plan and come up with maybe some brainstorming. It's very difficult. I'll agree with Brad on that. It's hard. And we don't mean to throttle anybody. We're looking to get the best for the town. And I see Pete in here. What input would you have or suggest just before we go to a vote or something? Does any of that make sense to you since we don't have Bill Holt here? And to come up with something to help all the parties there?
Yeah, I remember talking about this last meeting. And I think I suggested, similar to what you just said, Wally, with a three lot subdivision with a small cul-de-sac. But I think as far as the plan that's in front of you tonight, the A and R, I don't think. Man, I think it meets the regulations, so the board needs to, you know, approve it and move forward.
Yeah, it meets the reg. It's just that, you know, you can get your A and R. But if you think about that little mini cul-de-sac later, you can always keep this on the side and go with something different. And if you use it, you use it. You don't, you don't. Which I understand. I get it. But I think that's something that, Jay, you could do and get what you're looking for and meet all the regulations.
Well, I mean, my goal tonight was to see if we can get this A and R plan endorsed.
Yeah.
Basically so that I have a lot that I can hold on to.
Yeah, that makes sense. Okay.
Let's, you know, we've been on this for almost 45 minutes now, so.
Yeah. I'll second that motion.
We're beating it around the bush, so let's move on. And do I have a motion?
Yeah, I think we did. I'll motion it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Brad?
I.
Oh, wait, excuse me. Go ahead, Rebecca.
Sorry, just point of clarification. What's the motion? The motion to approve the A and R as submitted? Or is there any notation that the board is putting on, one way or the other? That's just for clarification purposes. I got lost in the conversation. My apologies.
No problem.
I think the notation that we.
We, I did, I think I did make a motion that with the remaining frontage could be buildable down the road if they wanted to proceed with it.
So I think.
If they want to change it, that's fine.
Well, I think you could say a comprehensive plan, but it's not a deal. I mean, do you agree? I mean, that would go to Adam, the attorney.
Yes.
So again, I have no objection to some conditioned vote that the remaining land is subject to future development. You know, how that future development occurs? I mean, again, what's left over is a buildable lot in terms of the frontage. It gets developed. I mean, it could be developed as a single house lot with a lengthy wetland crossing. It could be, there could be an attempt to further divide it through an additional A and R, which would come before your board. There could be an additional subdivision application made. I don't know how, there's a lot of ones there across with a subdivision roadway, but that's a possibility. There could be a cluster subdivision. There's all sorts of options as to what could be done. We don't have for us. I've got no objection to a conditioned vote that it be subject to future development. I just don't want some restriction placed on the remaining land, like not buildable without further zoning relief or not buildable without a comprehensive development plan when there's no basis for restricting that remaining land. This is a simple A and R. It's either a yay or a nay.
Exactly.
Yeah, I agree with that. The only restriction would be that on the other lot that it would just be out there further review. You wouldn't want to restrict the CSD or anything. You want all the options, so don't put that on there.
Well, you could say subject to future development.
Yeah.
That's what I'm saying.
Further review.
Further review, further development, whatever. So let's.
Future development. Do you agree?
Further development.
I am comfortable with subject to further development.
I, okay. And Rebecca, that okay with you?
Yes, that's perfect, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
The motion.
There is a motion on the table and I got a second. Brad?
Aye, Brad.
Jim? You must be muted, Jim.
Aye.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, all set. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Okay.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
All right, next one is up is Grove and Self-Storage, Brad Legals.
I've got to recluse myself from the board.
No problem. A special change request. Brad, you want to kind of explain what you want to do?
Yeah, we've been in conversations with the porous paving that we're going to do. We were going to do the porous paving along the back wall. We hit ledge. So we wanted, so we were going to move the porous paving to a high traffic area. But every time we go and get a bid, it comes up that it's not a good area to be putting porous paving in because once you plow it, it'll be chunking up. Coming from my site or, you know, the site next door, it's going to be clogging up with all the clay. You know, from Bill's site, coming down the road, all the sand and the mud. So I went back to engineers and they agreed. They wrote up something and sent it to Rebecca. Rebecca, I don't know if you have it or if the board has seen it yet. But we proposed to do a typical binder with a two-foot drip edge. And that would be open to stone over by the fence side. So everything would sheet over. And we still have a big three or four foot gravel base. We were going to pour the porous and that would suffice and capture everything like a porous driveway would and perk it back into the aquifer. So that's basically that in a nutshell. I don't know if Pete has seen that yet.
Yeah.
Jones and Beach.
I haven't reviewed it in detail, Brad, but the way that you described it, that infiltration trench, I think in general, will behave the same way as a porous pavement would.
Actually, I was out there today, looked at it. I read the from Jones and Beach Engineering. Did make sense. So I have no issues with it.
Well, thank you. Like I said, coming into this, you know what's going to happen? It's going to end up, you know, it's going to end up being ruined, plugged, chunked, and we're going to be putting down binder anyways.
Anyway.
And I'd rather bring it to the board's attention now.
Do it now, clean it up.
We could, yeah, so we could solve it with keeping some sort of porous base there instead of saying, oh, my God, I've got a, you know, emergency situation.
Decision time saves nine. Yes. So.
So it's just a minor mod, right?
Correct.
Yes.
Yeah. So the board's got a vote if they agree that it's a minor mod and then endorse, throw a vote to endorse the change subject to, you know, Pete's review, third party engineer review, and that's it.
Okay. And the other part would be, so we're going to.
Go ahead, Rebecca. Hold on one second, Brad. Rebecca, go ahead.
I just, again, point of clarification. I don't believe that the board needs to endorse anything per se. If it's an insubstantial change, then a document stating that the design change and in what capacity it's being made and reflecting a plan would be sufficient. If the board deems that this is a substantial change, then it is something like we're experiencing with Benjamin that would require a whole public hearing process and an endorsement of the plan to be recorded at the registry, et cetera. But this is proposed as an insubstantial change, which is something that we usually document through a, you know, a memo that we include in the file and that is reviewed with the engineer as and when they submit the final ad bill to verify that in fact they have complied with what was agreed upon with the board.
Yeah, and the endorsement I spoke of is a board vote, not a submission of a plan.
Understood.
Yeah, so I'll fly the motion to vote this as a minor change. And then the memo, as Rebecca just said, would be the engineer review letter as it comes through.
I'll second it. Jim?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, Jim?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, board.
You're welcome.
Okay, I'm coming back to my chair.
Now, there you go. Sorry for my the pollen and. the pollen and construction dust of the pollen is killing me right now. So if you can't understand me, I'm sorry about that.
Likewise, it's the pine pollen is killing me.
Oh, wicked. Plus, plus the construction over the, the new school is calling crazy. So anyway, let's see. The third is three oh one. Larry Warden, a potential reuse of the building.
Mr. Chairman, we had skipped over Billis Way and where I don't see the.
Oh, did I?
Potential.
Well, I'm sorry. Yes, I did.
For three oh one. And I do see Al Kuriot on the phone, so I would suggest that we go back to Al first and give the other gentleman a chance.
Al can wait. I don't care about that. No, that's fine. Yes, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to skip over Billis Way. So we'll go back up to Billis Way. Is a definitive subdivision, Al Kuriot, for a bond request. Al, debute yourself, please. Yeah, still muted, buddy.
Okay, I think I got it.
There you go.
Okay, so this all looks great. Pete has been helpful, done a good job. I just have a couple of questions. One quick for for Peter. I think it's a typo on the seed. Originally, you had two thousand and then your revised list for tonight, you had ten thousand. I think it's two bucks a foot, ten thousand feet. The math comes out to two thousand. I think that's a typo, so I want to address that. And my other question was, we were trying like heck to get binder down today, but we missed it. And we are getting it down tomorrow. So I have made arrangements with Peter. He is available to come out and verify that the binder goes down tomorrow. And I think we have a few days where documents need to be signed. And I'm hoping the board will allow Peter to submit an email verifying that the roadway binder was down. It's a big number. It's eighty thousand bucks. And then we can adjust this through Peter and Rebecca before the final document goes to the bank for the letter of credit.
Anybody on the board have any questions?
Yeah, which one? Al, is this the one off of?
It's Billis Way across by the cemetery.
The cemetery. Okay. Sorry, I wasn't aware that was even underway yet.
It's almost, it's almost done.
Yeah, yeah, I don't get to apparently miss that one. So, okay. What do we, this is, so this is the first binder request, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so this is.
Who floor range lists?
Just, Pete, what's your, what's your input on that?
Yeah, I talked to Al. I've been up to the site a couple of times. This one was permitted before T E C was working for the town, so I wasn't involved with the peer review at all. But I've met Al on site, reviewed the stats of the project. Most of the infrastructure is already in place, water, sewer, drainage, and the roadway base. So talking with Al, it sounds like he's scheduled for binder paving tomorrow. I told him I am available and could swing by the site tomorrow afternoon. But if the board wanted to, you know, grant that to Al, I could go out there and inspect that tomorrow and then update the board the email.
And that's on my way to work every day, too. So I've been monitoring pretty well also. I know I'm not supposed to, but I keep my eye on it anyhow. So everything looks good. They're doing everything right, so.
The only question I have is what was the original bond?
This is the original bond.
It is, okay.
Yes.
Yeah, I like to get, I like to get as much done as possible before I apply for the bond. So we got all the infrastructure done on Main Street in October before they paved and then finished up with the rest, rest of the infrastructure over the last few months. And I'd like to go ahead and submit this original bond so that I can get some lots released and put a couple of foundations in.
So I want to ask the board members, I'm a little naive to this, but is two hundred ninety thousand a record number per bond?
Well, that's, that was gonna be one of my questions to Pete. He's got a lot of the stuff in. Al, that big lot in the back, what did that, what is, obviously, you purchased it from the original owners. So what's the plan for that? Still just that one lot back there?
Yeah, the whole project is under definitive subdivision. I mean, it's.
Right, right. Yeah, I just, because there was a big problem with the cemetery stuff on that way back, I didn't, I didn't know which which way that went in the long run onto that. Yeah, Pete, got to weigh on Pete where the infrastructure, a lot of it's in place and he reviewed it. Although, what would be, what would be a problem if that's a correct number right now to approving this number? And then, you know, Pete goes in and checks it. And then Al submits a a request to reduce that line item once it's, once it goes in. That's the standard protocol. And I understand you got a day or two in here, but it's still gonna be checked as it's going down and, you know, two and a half rolled and all that. Who's gonna be on site during the paving?
It's actually four inches rolled. The peer review engineer, Mark Cameron will be there, Pete will be there. The chair will probably be there. I have about twenty sets of eyes on me, so I'm pretty sure it's gonna go in.
I know, I know Rennie is gonna be stopping by, too.
Yeah, Rennie, Rennie, Rennie's come by on a regular basis.
And how many lifts on that to get a four inch roll?
Two.
Two, two, two inch lifts?
Yep.
For a binder?
Yep.
Yeah, okay. On that, I'm gonna wait. My personal is, that's fine, but I would say go with this number if it's the right number and then just submit a request tomorrow to the board, just by letter form request in the the reduced number. Unless you want to wait and submit the thing.
That's why, that's what we're asking. We're asking if Pete can, you know, do his inspection tomorrow and submit to the board just to revise that one number for the binder. And the rest of these numbers are good.
Yeah, he's asking, he's asking for two hundred ninety.
Yeah, Pete, is that a good number for everything else? That was, that was only my question.
Yeah, so two ninety is the number. Al actually is correct. I made a typo on the seed. So actually, the true number is two eighty two. The seed's a little high right now, but the number two eighty two is the true number today. But what Al is saying is that tomorrow, the number's gonna be basically right at two hundred because he's gonna finish the binder by the end of the day tomorrow.
Okay, does that include the board twenty five over?
Uh, we're, we're carrying twenty percent contingency and three percent mobilization.
Yeah, dude.
Which was, which was another question I had.
Yeah, more, more, I don't understand why that is because we're doing, I mean, I'm doing a big job now. Anybody that takes over a job, they're not gonna charge mobilization for equipment if they're gonna take that job over.
Not, not, not only that, on a job like this, you know, it's a, it's a million dollar road and we're talking about a couple hundred thousand dollars. If something goes wrong, there's gonna be twenty people in line that that want to finish this job. All the, all the hard stuff is done. And I think what the chair is saying is that I, I as well have been doing this a long time and I haven't paid an excavator or mobilization fee in a long time, ten or fifteen years. I mean, they just don't get away with it anymore. You know, somebody wants to charge mobilization fee, I find another guy.
So then just, just submit the, if if that's a true number and it includes the increase, then, you know, motion to accept the number and then Al tomorrow or the next day or whenever T E C can get the letter to the, to the board that he certified that it went down, it was measured properly and all that, then then you just vote to reduce the number, whether you want to go to the bank tomorrow or the next day. That's up to you. But I think we can approve the number.
I I would just approve it with the two eighty two for today. Let's call it a day and.
Yeah, yeah, and then take it from there. So I'll, I'll fly that motion.
Well, that, that just means now I'm gonna get binded tomorrow and then I'll have to, you know, do this whole thing again next month instead of when we have the opportunity to do it tomorrow.
Well, not necessarily. It depends on how fast you get the bond.
Well, I'll get it binded tomorrow. Pete can send the email. We can adjust the number and then I can give that number to the bank. And Rebecca, I think, and I have some work to do with the Form Gs to be recorded. We need to certify the letter of credit. We need to do all that stuff, so.
So when's the next, when's the next meeting, the thirtieth, right?
Yeah, but that's a closed meeting.
Special meeting.
Special meeting. We're not gonna, we're not gonna, um.
So we're closed in August, so we're into September. So I would just fly that motion for the, for the bond as it is. Hey, listen, I do this too. So I don't know how many times that the paving company didn't show up or, you know.
Well, if they, if they don't, if they don't show up, then Pete doesn't send the email and this is the number. But I don't understand why we couldn't have the flexibility.
Otherwise, we'd be doing it tomorrow. I mean, we're not here tomorrow.
Okay, well, we got to approve the number. So let's, let's do that. And motion to approve the number at two eighty two.
Can we approve the number without the mobilization?
Well, I'm gonna prove the number that's on this form right there, so.
Well, that includes a three percent mobilization fee.
But ultimately, you want to adjust it tomorrow, correct?
If it's possible, yeah.
You're right, but we're not worried about tomorrow. Tonight, we're just worried about what we see before us. So that's the number that we're gonna go on. So that's what we're gonna try to approve, A and A.
Yeah, and then submit us requests to the board to change it after the stuff's down. Pete reviews it and comes back in and and, you know, the board can make a second motion to review it. But if, you know, if it's speedy and see, that's the bond number. Motion's on the floor if we second it. And then, and let's just vote on that. And then the second motion to discuss what you want to do.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, no, I have a motion on the floor. And do I have a second?
The motion is accepting the number that we're, the two eighty two that we see before us with the stipulation that tomorrow's number may change. And then we will address that new number later.
Is that the motion?
That's standard protocol, yeah.
Yeah. So all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, Brad.
Aye.
Aye.
Brad, Al, just get, if it goes down tomorrow, get the letter in and everything and we can. How do we do so for you?
Okay.
All right, let's see. If I can skip over something else. Billis Way, Grove and Storage. Now Rebecca, three oh one. Is everybody on for three oh one or not?
It does not look like the gentleman is on for three oh one, but I would like to have the discussion with the board if you would allow me to do so, Mr. Chair.
Absolutely.
So as we know, the gentleman from three oh one Main Street, the former gas station down in the square, has been trying to permit the property for multiple different uses. We've heard it for small retail. We've also heard it for a restaurant use. In terms of small retail, we heard everything from a hydroponic shop, from a boat storage location, from a contractor's office. So that there was, it's back on the market. And so the owner is advertising it for lease and he's also advertising it for sale. So I have received multiple, multiple inquiries about this particular property. And an individual had contacted me to utilize the building as a physical therapy office. And in order to secure financing, he wanted to see whether or not the board would be amenable to such a use where he is not proposing any changes to the curb cut as was originally discussed for other applications. And even if this gentleman does not proceed, I feel as though that is going to be a question for other individuals who call about this property. So while he may not be willing to proceed anymore, and that's why he's not on the call, I still wanted to get a flavor of the board as to what their position would be for the reuse of this building if and potential use did not want to again change the curb cut as has been discussed in the past, meaning moving the handicap ramp over, changing the signage, changing the striping, but again, leaving the, the width and diameter of the curb cut intact.
Wouldn't it depend on the use, the lower cap use?
And the allowed use.
Somewhat. I, I really, after going in and out of there a hundred times now, I mean, I really think they need to do the improvements on the curb cut and everything, just just to make both buildings feasible to get in and out.
What if it's physical therapist use?
That's my first opinion.
A physical therapist with two, with two doctors on board, how many, you know, what are they getting, two clients? An hour or every other hour now?
Half, half hour, yeah. Yeah, I mean, once they get busy, you know, you never know, you know, but.
How big of a, how big of a physical therapy office could that actually be?
Exactly. I, I understand.
The last time we spoke, we looked at six spots, two handicapped and four regular, correct?
Right. Pete, was that correct?
It was ten total parking spaces that were gonna be allocated for both the post office and also the new use. And then of those ten was a handicap parking spot, which would not be the required seventeen for restaurant use and a small retail, which was, was classified for the post office.
But the, the special permit approval was hinged upon. The Mass D O T's response as to how that was gonna move, did we ever hear back?
The zoning board of appeal denied the use as a restaurant. So while the planning board approved the site plan approval and the special permit for the reduction in parking, the zoning board of appeals decided that the use of the restaurant was not the intent and therefore denied their, their request.
Okay, so it's, so you back to square one. So, so we basically have a parking lot plan and that's it. And so a proposed use would have to go right back through, you know, C B A.
Well, the, the proposed use as a small retail is actually permitted use as a right and does not need to go before the C B A. And then also, a medical office building is also a permitted use as a right and would not need to go before the zoning board of appeals. So site plan approval is.
A medical office would require, you know, the building itself would require, you know, substantial changes to it. And and I agree, we did, the zoning does allow for medical use building. And we did that so that if you had client or Dr. X and Dr. Y, they wouldn't have to go through the whole thing again. It's kind of, you know, it was kind of a changing of the hands thing. You pay the fee at the town clerk's office to change the name from Dr. X to Y, and that's the use of the building. But this, this thing was never set up as a medical building and that's, that's a, you know, I think Bob, Bob and Brad can verify that. A medical building requires a lot of things that that building does not have.
That might be true, Walt.
That's a lot.
But the only other thing, and the other thing in addition to this is that there's been multiple inquiries on the building. So this is not the only inquiry that I've had. And the other inquiries are actually looking to convert the actual building into a residential home, which is something that would be allowed per right by the bylaw and would not require any review and or input from the planning board or any other board, as long as they complied with the building code. So I think it's a really important discussion that the board has in terms of what they would like to see at that particular site because it could be lost to a residential home and they have the ability to convert that building. And whereas all the other alternative measures for this building in terms of a commercial and business component have been not to expand and or alter the building, but to improve the facade and to improve the interior and the exterior in order to support the interior operation. So as I continue to receive these inquiries and where I'm disappointed that the gentleman did not show, I just wanted to make sure that the board is of the understanding that this property continues to go through turmoil and continues to go through the back and forth and to have some understanding of where the board stands. And continues to go through the back and forth and to have some understanding of where the board stands on future development of this site. Would be important to note in the minutes and important for the town to know what you all think moving forward.
Move, okay, my, my view would be, you know how I feel, commercial use over residential.
Absolutely, but.
I mean, 1,000%. I mean, that's, that's a good.
My view is though, they, they have to do the, uh, recommended curb cuts and, uh, and everything to get in and out of there.
But I, I, I get the curb cut issue that was in the past. We had that. Big discussion about, uh, was our right for Groveland Diner to park on the street, but nobody else could. You know, aside from that, I still think it would have to depend on the use. If somebody's gonna have a nurse practitioner and some, you know, another doctor. And they're only gonna have four vehicles there, I don't see the problem. I mean, it would all, it depends on the use. It, it's, if somebody wants to have 50 cars, that's gonna be a problem.
I, I just, I just feel that it is, even the way it is right now, just trying to get in and out. You know, one car coming in and one car going out. You, you just can't do it, really. Yeah, and then the light changes and, uh, it gets all screwed up, so.
I agree with both you gentlemen. So my personal feelings is this. That right now, we're just trying to entertain the thought of having it be a feasible piece of property.
Right.
So as far as the gentleman, uh, Wally, what you were saying with the cost and all that, that's not really our concern. What they do with it and how they get arranged and get it approved, that's up to them. We're here just to entertain the thought to say that it is a feasible concept. That having physical therapists, two doctors, can work very easily. As far as the curb cut goes, there is some truth to that, to the backlog, the lights and everything that goes with it. But we're not really here to entertain that thought about the curb cut and everything else. We're just here just to entertain the thought of. Is this gonna be commercial over property? And I think for my purposes, being here a year on the board, watching this go back and forth with different people trying to. Try to do something with that property. I think this would be almost a win-win in a sense that they would like to see something happen to this property.
Oh, without a doubt.
Yeah, I, I think the commercial is definitely a venue, but it, there's just a couple of things to keep in mind. One. Okay, the Commonwealth made a big error in not demolishing this building. The second piece was the town of Groveland didn't purchase it either. Because it was, it was one of the things to improve, um, the downtown area, whether that be a parking area. Or a boat ramp to go down and allow people to come park there on a, on a dock and then come up into town. But we still have a, a major traffic issue. And the use will speak for itself. So whoever wants to come in and apply for the use, uh, will review it at that time. Otherwise, we're guessing. But that area, getting in and out of there, no matter if you're one car or five cars. I mean, you go down there at a certain part of day, you cannot get out of there. And that was the concern and the Mass DOT is either gonna fix it or sign off on it because they built it. And then we'll just have to, that's why we put that condition in. So it is what it is. If the medical office, they wanna do it, sure, bring it in, file it. And, and see what comes in. We'll review it at that time. But we did approve it and they still, I think he's got a, he doesn't wanna go to the Mass DOT. And have them straighten that out. And, uh, and that's on them.
Mass DOT is not gonna do anything with it, so.
All right, well then they have to. It's not on us.
Do they get back, do they ever get back to us? Was it definitive?
No, since, sorry, no, since there was no further, um, um, progress, they have not.
That's too bad.
So the decision really is, is still valid.
I'd like to ask Pete. Um, what do you think about the end? Just even if it's a commercial.
Um, I think the way that it functions now legally is not viable because the, Abutter has spoken up about it. In many, many meetings. And the current driveway is too narrow to support two-way traffic. So there needs to be an adjustment made. That, that's, that's specific to the driveway. So I think the, the takeaway I'm getting from the board is they're in support of. A commercial business being put in there with the footnote that there are some site improvements that need to be made in order to accommodate it.
Absolutely. That's what.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Yep.
And that's perfect. And that's all I really wanna get on the record is that moving forward, then anybody that does come into this particular area needs to recognize that while. You know, facade improvements are appreciated, that the board does not wanna entertain any proposals that does not address the curb cut and traffic flow throughout the site. And then in addition to that, I just also wanna note to the board that we were successful in our endeavors to get a grant for a parking management plan for Elm Square. So we are going to, um, partner with Stan Tech, uh, through the Massachusetts Downtown Initiative Grant Program for $15,000. They are going to help us put together and build upon what we were able to, uh, do for an initial inventory. And figure out some of the potential parking relief, uh, moving forward.
Rebecca, could that site be included? Can, can that site be included?
The entire Elm Square is going to be, uh, in, included and that would include any of the private and public parking spots. So we will, um, explore shared parking agreement possibilities. We will explore, um, some of the inventory that we've already taken in terms of vacancy. Um, and what lots are available. We will take into consideration striping, wayfinding, um, just the general navigation throughout the square. And where people are, are going and how they're, they're perceiving the, the parking issues.
So that would be a yes on that particular parcel, which was, was, uh, one of the things we were looking at, I think 15 years ago when we did Elm Square over. You know, Elm Park round. So, okay, thank you.
Well, so, uh, I think you got your answer.
Okay, what's next?
Rebecca? Did you get, get your answer from us?
Yes, I did. Thank you, Mr. Chair and all the members.
You know, anything else on that? All right. The next one is, um, Benjamin Street Extension Modification Vote Memorandum of Discussion. Uh, Wally, I don't have to recede on this, so you have to take over.
Okay. Um, on that, okay, we, we closed the hearing on this, did we not?
Yes, we did.
Okay, so, uh, I saw it. Has everyone seen the proposed changes? The mod. And Pete, what's your input on that?
Um, I think the applicant has done a nice job. Uh, I think they're putting their best foot forward to fix the mistake that was made. They've worked closely with Nancy, the Abutter at Nine Bell Street to try and, um, accommodate her and, uh, her requests. So I think the current plan, uh, reflects those, those adjustments and, um. Yeah.
Okay, the, um, Rebecca, I have one question. I, I think you answered it last week, but just for clarification. That, uh, menu item. For shade trees. On all the subdivisions, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, but I thought we said that was in the original. Memorandum?
Yes, it was in the original memorandum, but I've also taken the actual boilerplate language as you had suggested. And put it back into this modification. So it's reiterated, um, specifically right after, um, the conditions as recommended by the peer review engineer. Concerning, uh, the total trees to be removed and that the, um, uh, owner had asked for the wood to be returned over at Nine Bell. And then also that the encroachment area A, which was the residential lomni, the, um, uh, planted with some type of ground covering. And then I put in, in the condition seven, which you'll see on the screen, the boilerplate language concerning that, uh, prior to occupancy. Uh, the building permission, uh, by the building commissioner and screening as may be reasonably required by the planning board will be added to the project at the project owner's expense.
Okay, so we'll, so if it doesn't work out with the, with the landscape plan, the board still has a discretion going in with the, uh. Um, with your butter and, and relocate some shade trees or buffer trees if needed.
That's how it's listed in condition number seven up on the screen, but if you'd like to enhance it and or change it, please let me know. I can do that at this time.
Yeah, I think the standard boilerplate is, uh, let me see, for review, part of the, so it's, yeah, the, I, I think the only thing I would add on to that screening is, is, uh, to. Either in parentheses or how we listed it on the original boilerplate, which was a tree buffer zone. Um, although, you know, not a fence or something like that. This was specific to, uh, to vegetation.
But the buffer zone becomes a little bit interesting because how do you identify a buffer area without identifying a certain area in which you're setting aside to be included as a buffer? Other than to state that you're utilizing the trees as a buffer.
Yeah, well, that's. Ti- typically the, in the intent of that whole regulation was that, uh, on it, when you're building a development with a house on it. Everybody does their best intentions, but sometimes you gotta shift things around on the lot. And when you go down there and you do your best job of estimating for, you know, keeping a tree buffer zone intact for. Privacy areas or another subdivision that abuts it, et cetera, uh, you really can't determine that. So we put in. Until the houses are up and then you go back in and take a look. So it gave the, the board the discretion to go back in and put the buffer zone selectively if you needed a tree here or a tree there. To plug some holes that, because the land may have had to be disturbed for septic or foundation or something like that. It was, it wasn't menacing. It was just to fill the holes as best you could. And, uh, I think we've only done it about. Half a dozen times beyond a tree or two. Um, and that was because that's the house had a slot.
I don't mind changing, I don't mind changing the language. Um, I just have a, um, I, I don't particularly feel comfortable placing buffer zones on personal and private property. Um, without, um, identifying that such. So if you're talking about putting a tree up on, you know, uh, the right of way, that's one thing on, on town property. I'm totally for that. I just wanna specify that you cannot put buffer zones up on private property without putting that type of, you know, covenant and or restriction on that particular deed. And or, uh, area of the plan.
No, I understand that. And this is a subdivision, so. So we did come into contact, but if there is a, if there is through Nancy, a designated area, I agree with you. But the blanket on a ten, ten house subdivision, ten lot subdivision, was that it could be anywhere through the subdivision. So. Uh, so that's why if, if we have that original boilerplate in the original memorandum. As, as we've been using for a couple of decades, then that's fine. And that can stay. And then the language on seven you put in is fine. You just have screening and I didn't know if you wanted, um. Delineate that as to something specific. The screening could be a fence, screening could be vegetation, screening could be. You know, a structure. So what, what, what was the intent of seven on that for the screening?
I left that at the discretion of the board. So however you would like to phrase it or rephrase it is entirely up to the board.
Uh, Pete and, and is Nancy on the call?
I believe Nancy is on the call. Nancy?
She may be muted.
Yes.
Okay, I think I'm unmuted.
No, there you go. Okay. Hi Nancy. Uh, you've seen this and I take it you're okay with this?
Yes, um, I just had a couple of questions, if you don't mind. Um. Alrighty, um, the easement, uh, document that I'm to sign. Um, Rebecca very nicely, uh, forwarded me a, forwarded me a copy of it. And it, it, uh. It names the document from November 19th. Not the modification. Would I, does the easement I sign need to reflect that modification?
Yeah, it said, who, who drew it up?
Uh, Dean's lawyer.
All right, so they, they just put the old date of the original, so that, that date would have to change. But it would after this vote because then we, this, then this would be in place. So that's, yeah, the. They'll just have to do that again. And what's your other question?
I, the stop sign. At the intersection of Bell and Benjamin.
Yeah.
Um, for two houses, a stop sign, to me seems ludicrous. Uh, but if you, if you watch, if, if you're driving up here in the wintertime, when it's slippery. To have somebody stop at the end of that, of Benjamin, uh, extension or whatever we're calling it. And then try to start up to go up the hill past Steve's old house. You're pretty much, uh, you know, uh, subjecting those people to failure, getting out of the, the, out of the hill. That would be like me stopping at the end of Bell Street before I proceeded up Benjamin. Um, it's, it's just, it doesn't seem feasible to me.
Does the question they ask is, does the, does the planning board have the right or. To go ahead and to change a stop sign that's already been established through the town? Isn't that another agency that will handle that problem?
Well, on a new subdivision, Jim, we actually do have, um, there's boilerplate that we put up. Uh, stop signs, caution signs, playground signs, you know, caution kids playing, that sort of thing. But I, I think, I, I think that there should be something on signage if it's necessary, but I see where Nancy's going with this. Uh, perhaps requesting, uh, from the highway commissioner, who would be in charge of that later. Uh, perhaps a proceed with caution sign. Uh, or some other language, but, uh, we could probably change that to signage to be determined by the road commissioner. If that's amendable, since that, that's his bailing work at a certain point.
Alrighty, that makes sense because as I say, it just didn't, it, it would be tough enough coming up from, up from the back of the property. To Bell Street and then to have to stop and lose all momentum before you go up the hill in front of them. That just didn't make any sense to me, so. I appreciate you, uh, considering that.
Yeah, a proceed with caution or something like that. I'm sure there's other sign language. Uh, that I'm not familiar with, that would, that would meet the need. But, uh, i- if they're, um, so we could. Rebecca, that would be a change if necessary, just to be determined by the road commissioner.
Yes, certainly.
Yeah, I mean, that's a simple, simple fix. All right.
Does the engine have to get involved with this, make sure that it's feasible? Is that, or is the highway commissioner is the one who sets that precedence?
Yeah, he determines what signs they want. We give the options on the subdivisions. Um, for the signage to be reviewed and possibilities because, and there's actually a list of like four or five items. Um, unlike the, uh, we, we have this problem here with the Evergreen International Speedway here. Um, where, where is that straightaway in there? So, uh, and there's a lot of kids around. So yes, there's.
It's, it's a low impact road. It, it's. Low, low traffic road, so.
Yeah, we, we just leave it up to him. I, I think a proceed with caution. Think we settled whatever, would, would be sufficient, but let's, let's hand it off and, and see, maybe once, you know, to Nancy's point. So, uh, but, but anyway, that, we can leave that determination up to him. Um, anything else on that, Nancy?
Nope, everything sounds great to me. Thank you.
All right, so they'll have to tweak your, uh, your easement paperwork, so. Um, I'm sure they'll get that straightened out for you, because it'll have this, this particular one referenced. Uh, Pete, anything else?
Uh, no, nothing else on my end, um. Other than, uh, from Rebecca and I talked about, which would be, um, the cease and desist and when they could start work.
Okay, once this gets recorded, that'll probably, uh, that'll come off. Is that a, you guys want a separate vote on that?
Well, I do know that the, um, the owner is, um, extremely interested in trying to, um, pick up work, uh, wherever they can. In terms of this development with the setbacks that they've encountered. So I have asked Pete to see whether or not he thought that there was anything that they could begin working on that would not impact, uh, the Abutter's property. And or the construction easement or anything of that nature. And I did talk about this, uh, with Nancy Sweater, uh, the Abutter as well. And she agreed that as long as it wasn't on their property or impacted her. And she agreed that as long as it wasn't on their property or impacted her property, that she would be okay with them proceeding with some, um, other items as, um, T E C thought might be. Uh, amenable. And, and again, I just know that the applicant has been trying to work with us. They have been doing everything that we've asked them to. We have been collaborating very closely together and I didn't think that the board would, would be opposed to hearing, um, them out on trying to proceed with some of those items.
Well, once we approve this and sign it. Um, and it gets recorded, you're, you're off because now we have exactly what we were looking for.
This is true, but you have a twenty-day appeal period. So if there's anybody who comes in and says, hey, you know what, I don't like what you guys decided, then it needs to go to land court and you have all that other stuff. So you have a twenty-day.
Yeah, you have to proceed with caution. But that's, that's standard on everything with the, uh, proceed under your own risk thing. I, I, I don't disagree that, and. Um, I haven't seen too many challenges, except for maybe within a couple of days. Um, but what, it's out of the board's hands at that point.
I just get a little bit nervous, especially where a lot of this is pending on the access and rights to a private, uh, property. Um, to actually construct this and whereas we're going above and beyond to accommodate, um, some of the things that have taken place and, and to, to, to get a design that is, you know, something that everybody wants. I just want to make sure that it's done correctly. So that would mean a twenty-day appeal period, then they would need to record the decision, get the plan endorsed, record the, the plan. And then they would need to get the construction easement signed and then that document would also have to be, um, red, uh, recorded. So, I mean, you're not talking about, you know, a week-long wait. You're talking about more like a month.
Yeah, but it's, it's the. Uh, that's all correct on the timelines, Rebecca. I mean, that's a hundred percent, you're a hundred percent accurate. It's just the, uh, it, it would be a proceed precaution. On, on the developer at that point. Once, once we agree to it and it goes through the appeal period. I mean, that's, that's on them and that's true. Anyone could appeal it, but I, no one's here at this hearing except for us. Um, so was there an alternate suggestion, Rebecca?
No alternate suggestion, just again, uh, potentially coming up with a list of a couple of items that the board felt comfortable allowing them to proceed with now. Other than that, you can just state that they're at their own risk and they can proceed at their own risk. We can approve the decision as drafted and amended and then call it a day. So we can either call out those items that the board feels comfortable with, or you can just lump it all together and say, listen, this is at your own risk. You do what you need to do and call it a day.
You're absolutely correct, Rebecca. I mean, as long as they don't violate the cease and desist. Nancy's okay with them doing work outside the premises of her, her property line. And they do know that there are risks involved. I don't see where there's an issue with all this. Gentlemen?
Yeah, I, I agree. I think we vote this in and, and it, it carries its, its own weight.
I'm not sure. So does that mean that we will be able to proceed at our own risk prior to the twenty-day appeal?
It's, it's always at your own risk, whether it's a subdivision or another one. Once it's endorsed and, and the time clock hits in the, in the clerk's office. You, you're at your own risk until the appeal period ends.
Right, so does that mean that the cease and desist could be lifted?
It is.
Yeah, it'll, it'll be lifted once, once the appeal period's over, but anything you're doing at that is, is at your own risk. But just for clarity, what, what is it that you wanted to do that Nancy agreed with?
Well, actually, I thought Peter and Rebecca had come up with some things that they thought.
Oh, you guys did, okay.
I haven't heard what those were.
Uh, yep, there's, there's a couple of trees along the right of way that are kind of leaning over the roadway, so the thought was that those could come down. Um, the roadway, if you can remember, the, the layout of the road was shifted slightly to the left away from Nancy's property. So I think they could start to work on the widening of that roadway to get it in place where it's, um, where the new layout is now. And then any, any work on the private property, I think it's thirty-six Benjamin at the bottom of the hill. Would be fine. It wouldn't, it wouldn't impact Nancy's property at all.
Is that therefore they can do the work and the cease and desist is still say in order?
Correct me?
Yeah, that I don't know. Is, is the, is it the building inspector who issued the cease and desist?
It was the planning department that issued the cease and desist. There was no specific language that stated that the building commissioner would be issuing the cease and desist or had the authority to issue the cease and desist under a subdivision, uh, permit. If it was under a special permit under, uh, the zoning bylaw, that might be different, but we don't have an enforcement agent listed in the subdivisional regulations and therefore it is the planning department. So we issued the cease and desist specifically, I did, on behalf of the board.
So Rebecca would be able to, uh, issue a. Partial cease and desist with the instruction that they could proceed at their own risk on those items.
Yeah, an okay to work order on, on the list, really.
And then, and then the, the cease and desist would be fully lifted after twenty days, right Rebecca?
Yeah.
Yes, that is correct.
Yeah, so do you guys, uh, Rebecca, do you have a small document that says okay to work on the following items?
I can draft something up and, and share that with the, um, applicant if you'd like.
Yeah, that's, if, if, that would be okay with me based upon what that is. And then, and then the appeal period would go and it's specific enough that. Um, from the board's perspective. And then the, um, you could also put in that letter. Um, that the full cease would, would, um, would be lifted after the recording of the documents after the, um, appeal period. If that's okay with everybody?
I can certainly do that if the board is amenable to that.
That sounds alright to me.
Okay, Jim?
Yes.
Okay, so let's, let's get a motion to do that, a limited, limited work to be detailed. And then the full cease will, uh, will be removed upon recording and the end of the appeal period.
So motion.
Second, anybody?
Jim?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye, Brad.
Aye, Jim.
Aye, Wally. Okay. Alright, so that's, that's that motion and then, and then a motion to approve, uh, the modification. Um, as presented.
So motion.
Need a second? Okay, uh, all in favors, the guy who's saying aye?
Aye, Brad.
Aye, Jim.
Aye, Wally. Okay. So that's that. And then, um, Rebecca, when can we, uh. You want me to zing in and sign this thing, endorse it? It's just the, uh, the mod, right? Or do you want to?
Yeah, so I have the, I have the decision drafted. I will amend the decision to reflect this stop sign language that was, um, discussed with the board. Um, I can send that over to you, um, uh, through email and if you were able to print that and just drop it off at town hall, you can even just put it in the mail slot. And then I can have the town clerk sign it. So you could, either yourself, Jim, or Brad can sign it on behalf of the board. Whoever would be willing to do so, drop it off at town hall, literally in the mail slot. I'll let Beth Connick know the town clerk that it's being dropped off on whatever date you're gonna drop it off sooner rather than later. So timestamp it and then the, the appeal period will start the day right after that.
Yeah, if you drop it. Yeah, if you send it to me, um, tomorrow, uh, I can endorse it and drop it off.
I will send it to you this evening, so you will have it. And so I'll let Beth know that you'll drop it off tomorrow and then I will timestamp tomorrow and the twenty-day appeal period will start on Thursday.
Roger that. Okay. Alright.
Thank you.
That sounds good. You're welcome. Thanks for working, everybody. Alright, and what, what else do we get besides draft minutes?
Uh.
We have an invoice as well for T E C.
I got, you got some invoices, uh, voice, um, Benjamin Street Extension. T E C invoice for one thousand, two hundred and twenty-three dollars. Do I have a motion?
No motion.
Second? Alright, all in favor, Jim?
Alright.
Wally?
Aye.
Brad?
Aye.
Yep, okay, um, let's see.
And then just minutes, Mr. Chair.
Yes, I do, uh, yes. Oh, I'm sorry. See, I skip over everything, you know? I should turn my lights on, I guess, but, um. For, uh, two thousand, I mean, June second, twenty-twenty minutes.
No motion.
Second.
Okay, Wally?
All in favor, aye.
Aye, Brad.
Yeah, Brad, Jim, aye. Okay.
Motion adjourned.
Am I, uh, motion adjourned?
Second.
At, uh, eight forty-four.
I would like to thank the board for all their assistance in this endeavor that we've taken. I really appreciate all your hard work. Thank you.
Have a nice one.
Alright Nancy, thank you.
Yeah, we work for you, all the residents of town, so our constituents, we work for you.
Alright guys, well, um, we'll see you, I think, but. When's the next meeting, Rebecca?
The next meeting will be on June thirtieth. We will only be discussing one oh six King Street.
Yeah, June thirtieth and then, um. After that. We will discuss, um. Having, changing meetings and everything. We, we usually meet the, the second and fourth or second, first and second or third, you said Rebecca?
It's the, it's the first and third, uh, the first and third Tuesday of every month. My concern is that we actually have a potential Form A coming in and then we also have eight ninety-five Salem Street for a safe plan approval and also a stormwater management and land disturbance permit. So they're gonna be looking to get on that upcoming agenda. So we will need to either have a meeting in July and/or August. Um, in order to meet those statutory, uh, timeframes as well as one oh six King. If we do not make a determination on the thirtieth, they only find continuance until August. So we will need to meet either July or August. So we will need to, to determine that meeting at the next meeting.
Okay.
Well, I can, the continuations for any subdivision can be extended out for any length of time based upon what the applicant wants to do. So that's, if we don't make the meeting on that because of, you know, design changes or it requires more hearings, that's, that's an easy one. The, the A and Rs, uh, there is a statutory twenty-one day, however, that has to be submitted to the board first. So if we don't have a meeting, that time clock doesn't start, but I'm all for helping out applicants. Um, just a note to everybody on that, so.
Yeah, um, I just. I'd like to, just try to say, let's, let's try to keep July open. Most everybody takes a little vacation. Um, I don't know about you, Wally, or Brad, Jim, um.
Yeah, I know the first week, um, I'm somewhere, but the rest of it's.
Yeah, the second, the second week I'm gone, but, um. You know, uh, later in the, in July that we get, that we'll, we'll discuss it next meeting. Just think.
Yeah.
Just try to plan out your schedules and then we'll discuss it next, uh, next meeting. How's that?
Okay.
Guys, well, everybody be safe and, uh, we'll see you next meeting. Thank you.
Roger that.
Thank you.
Yep.